You ready? I'd like to call to order the regular study session, I mean, regular meeting of October 24th. And do we have a closed session report? City Attorney?
There's nothing to report.
Thank you. Can we have roll call, please?
The record will show that all members are present.
Thank you. We'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and have Councilmember Daigle lead it. And please remain standing for the invocation with Chaplain Lloyd Sellers of the Hoag Memorial Presbyterian giving our invocation.
Allegiances to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Almighty God, eternal, more patient than the ages, and wise both in hurrying up and in slowing down. Save us from wasting our time by being in too big a hurry. Bury deeper under the skin the nerves that would run flush with the surface. Remove the hair triggers that prompt us to fire before we're ready. Cancel the orders that command us to set off in two different directions at the same time. Calm us, Lord. Quiet us. Silence us in these special moments. Help us to watch and to listen, to consider and to plan, and grant that we may find in the end the straight gate and the narrow way that leads us to life worth our living and our sharing one with the other. Bless us this evening, we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much, Chaplain. Seems like this centennial goes on forever. We have a presentation tonight on the Centennial Book, which was introduced to the city of Newport Beach about two and a half weeks ago at a book signing ceremony. And we have together tonight, Janice, are you going to lead off or are you going to have Chris lead off? Okay, Janice Dinwiddie is going to give us an introduction, but this is what the book looks like, and Janice is going to tell us about it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm Janice Dinwiddie. I'm the project manager for the Centennial, which does seem to go on and on. We are actually, one of the special legacies of the Centennial year is the Centennial Book. And I'm happy tonight to introduce the author of the book, Christopher Trela, who is going to give you a short presentation and let you know about the book and where it's available for purchase.
Thank you.
Without further ado, I'd like to introduce Christopher Trela.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. We do have a brief audio/video presentation, visual presentation, I should say. What I'm going to do is attempt to cover 100 years and 100 seconds. The book did, as the mayor said, come out a few weeks ago. The idea behind the book was not to write a history book, but more to celebrate all the wonderful elements that comprise Newport Beach. And being a Newport Beach resident, it was a pleasure for me to write something like this. What I've done is put about a dozen of the more interesting and kind of, I would say, some of the more spectacular photos that are in the book into a quick little presentation. There are 250 photos in the book, which were culled from about 5,000 photos. Some of these images you will recognize as far as where they are. What we're trying to do with a lot of these, obviously, is show off all the different elements of the city. The book is grouped into different themes. We've got historic photos. We've got things on the history of Hollywood's association with Newport Beach. Of course, the fishing industry was key to Newport Beach. Those are actually the McFadden Brothers on the upper left there. That looks like a painting. That is an actual photograph taken on one of the piers. Back Bay, of course. Again, some key elements and areas of the city. Some wonderful images. Of course, landmarks of the town. Balboa Bay Club. Sure you recognize that, an annual occurrence in the city. And where you can buy the book at the moment, City Hall, the Newport Beach Public Library on Avocado, the Oasis Senior Center, Lido Village Books, Martha's Bookstore. And we are constantly adding more. In fact, I'll be at Great Lakes Wine Gallery in two weeks, signing books and enjoying a glass of wine there. They go for $25 retail or $30 through their website, which includes shipping and handling. And I just wanted to tell you what a pleasure it was to be able to write this book. I think I learned as much as I was writing it as I did transfer those facts into the book. So again, it's a pleasure to live in the city and a pleasure to have written the book for you.
And this is a soft cover book that's $25.
It is a soft cover, correct. There were limited hardcover editions, which you've seen.
Chris, I really appreciate you stepping in and putting all the effort that you put into this in creating what I think is just a wonderful and very memorable legacy for our centennial and doing it all in under, let's see, you started, was it February or March?
Probably March, so.
Okay, so we're.
Less than six months.
You did a wonderful job to get it actually out and published in that timeframe. Of course, you had a lot of help from other, from both city staff members and committee members.
Absolutely.
Gaywassel Kelly had a really, a lot of input related to photos and historical information and proofreading. Linda Kay over at the library did a lot of work on the proofreading also.
Oh, absolutely. A definite team effort on this one.
I'm really proud to have this as a part of our collection. Anybody from the council have any comments or thoughts on this? Thank you very much, Chris.
Thank you. And this is proof that the Centennial will keep going on and on.
All right.
Thank you.[653.16][653.16](APPLAUSE).
That's the only presentation that we have tonight, so City Clerk?
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has the discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones and pagers off or set them in the silent mode. This is a time for city council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Thank you. Actually, there's an item on this later on in the agenda, but I wanted to be the first to announce that the Board of Supervisors today at their meeting approved our, what we have been calling Sphere Issues Agreement, but this, it's a pared-down agreement related to the various different subjects that we started out with. But definitely, it, the key element that we felt was most important was the ability to have some say in what might happen in the future if the county wanted to either extend the runways to the south or add a second runway. And we ended up getting the ability to review and make our determination one way or the other whether we felt that should happen. And so that I would like to thank the Board of Supervisors for passing it. It only passed on a three-to-two vote, but I know that Homer Bloudow has spent literally hundreds of hours working with the county staff on this, and I'd like to compliment Homer for that effort. We had this Sphere Issues Committee that started about three years ago. Steve Rozansky, Mr. Ridgeway, and several council members that aren't sitting up here right now. Steve Romberg was another one. So that we've spent a lot of effort on this. I'm sorry that we couldn't get a larger agreement, but we got the one thing that we felt was most important out there. It's for the residents, when they say that we should do more towards controlling the airport, one of the things that needs to be understood is that we don't own the airport property. It is not in the city of Newport Beach, and we don't own or have the ability to regulate those planes that are flying up in the air. That belongs to the Federal Aviation Association. So Newport Beach has, City Council has taken an active role, beginning back in the '60s, really, I think, in trying to protect our citizens from the expansion of John Wayne. Yes, it has grown. We have had the, we have been successful in creating a settlement agreement that has put limits. The key element in that settlement agreement is curfews. Those curfews are going to be in effect until, I believe it's 2020, 21, excuse me, 2021. We have maximum passenger levels that are set, which are in effect until 2016, if I remember correctly. So that we still can't stop here as far as our airport issues are concerned. This is a key element to say that we, gives us, I guess you could call it a veto power as far as extensions of the runway to the south or adding another runway, but we still need to look towards what happens beyond 2016. And so that the City Council, in adopting their City Council policy, I believe it's A17, recently put down the history of what has happened related to the City Council doing work on the airport. It lists, and for those of you that are out in the audience there and want to look at that policy, go to our city webpage, which is www.city.nuitport-beach.ca.us. It's very long, and every time I type it, I misspell a letter or something. But at any rate, you get, you end up getting the webpage, you go to City Council, and you look at City Council policies, and you can pull up that policy. And it's an interesting document. It's quite long. There's over 40 pages in it because it includes a copy of the settlement agreement. It includes a number of other exhibits, but it also gives you a history of what went on. It lets you know what the city is able to do related to the laws that are out there, what we can and can't do. So that our City Council is probably one of our top elements, or not elements, but policies and priorities, has always been to try to work with the various different agencies that are involved in trying to make sure that our citizens are protected from future significant expansions to the airport. We have done a tremendous amount. There's a lot more that we can still do. So I would like to again congratulate Homer for the hours that he's done and congratulate the city for being able to get this agreement. And I don't think there's anybody up here that's going to vote against the ratification of that agreement when it comes on later in the agenda. Councilmember Curry, is there anything, comments that you might have related to announcements?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I just echo your comments because this truly is a red-letter day for the city, and it's worth noting that it was not without difficulty yet. The county was on a 3-2 vote. There was opposition. There were strenuous issues that got tossed into this. I think Homer did a fabulous job in winning this issue for the city, in stopping the runway expansion and helping to preserve the quality of life in the city. So this is truly a red-letter day that we should all be celebrating across the city, and I commend you, Homer, for the hours of work with the county as they continue to change their positions during the course of this negotiation, to keep your eye on the ball, focused on the runway limitation, which is the critical element, and to achieve the victory that we achieved this week.
Councilmember Selig?
No, there's nothing more I can say about the airport agreement, so I don't have anything.
Councilmember Rozansky?
As long as it's not limited to the airport agreement, I don't have anything else to say.
No, this is announcements in general.
Okay, good, then I do have a few. Although I would also like to put in my two cents on the airport agreement. It was a long time in coming. I think it's a great agreement for the city. It's not the end, it's just the beginning. 2016 is going to be on us sooner than we think, and certainly we'll have to be looking forward or towards that date to work on extending the limitations on the airport to protect the quality of life for all of our residents here in Newport Beach. So that's something I'll be devoting at least the next two years and maybe the next six years, too, as well. With that being said, there was a couple of other events that went on in town in the last couple of weeks. The one that I'm most proud of is we finally got agreement from the state of California on the sale of the Sunset Ridge Park parcel, 15 acres at the corner of Superior and Pacific Coast Highway. It's a project that I've worked on for over two years. And as difficult as it was dealing with the county on the airport agreement, the state is way worse when it comes to trying to get a commitment on anything. So we have an agreement now to buy that property for $5 million. We're just waiting for the paperwork to be processed, and I fully expect to see ball fields sprout on that piece of land in the next couple of years. So I think that's, it was a great win for West Newport and the city as a whole and for our youth. As far as other things that went on in town that I attended, congratulations to the Bungalow Restaurant on their 10th anniversary. Unfortunately, I think the rest of the council couldn't make it there because they were all at a campaign forum that night. Also, I attended the Friends and Naturalists Plain Air Art Festival at the Moose Center. It was a great event. They raised a lot of money for projects in the Back Bay, and it was really nice to see the scenes there of the Back Bay. Councilman Curry was also there. Last was the Newport Lexus had their grand opening. It was a blowout event, probably one of the nicest parties I've ever been to, and I understand that they're very successful there. They've sold, someone told me, 1,000 cars in 100 days. So I think they're well past their expectations, and it's really a feather in the cap for the city. The amount of sales tax revenue that's going to be generated off of that one dealership is going to pay for a lot of services for our residents. And the last thing that I wanted to ask for is I would like staff to come back with an ordinance, a proposed ordinance, that's going to require screening of mechanical equipment, such as like air conditioning equipment and things like that on rooftops. I was kind of shocked to find out when I saw some air conditioning equipment go up on a building in West Newport, and it wasn't screened, it's just a bunch of ducks and air conditioners on their roof. And I thought for sure we must have some kind of a law that says that they have to screen that type of thing from public view. And, you know, I was kind of amazed when I found out that we don't. And so I would request that staff come back with, so certainly that it screens it on commercial properties. I would, I would think residential properties as well. You know, I don't know all the, what's involved, and, you know, maybe solar panels or things like that might be some type of an exception. But when you're talking about basic mechanical equipment, I think we are in an age now where we have the technology to make that stuff kind of disappear, and that would be it. Thank you.
Councilmember Ridgeway?
Are we going to be voting on the spheres issue later?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'll reserve my comments to then because, as you know, I've been on that thing for four years and spent many an evening and day at the county on this issue. So I'll reserve that. The only announcement I'd like to make is I had the, an opportunity and the pleasure of visiting the city of Boston for the weekend. The Newport Aquatic Club had two junior teams that went back there, an eight-man skull for girls and an eight-man, or eight-person junior for boys. My son was on the boys' team, and it is the largest rowing regatta in the world, 300,000 people along the shores of the Charles River. It's called the Head of the Charles. It was a wonderful event. The boys, they were in, as juniors, they were with boys that were 19 and younger, and they're a high school team. There were 81 boats, and they took 30th. And let me say, that's an extraordinary event for a bunch of high school boys. The girls took 17th out of, I think, right around 60. So again, an extraordinary event. The Newport Aquatic Club really represented both this community and the state well back at, at the head of the Charles race, and it was an extraordinary event. My, congratulations quite candidly to Newport Aquatic Club, a great asset for this city.
Councilmember Daigle?
I do have one, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Just to tag on to Councilmember Rozansky's comment, I think on commercial, did we ever finally do an ordinance for trash enclosures for, for the commercial bins? And if not, would you please look at that? We're about the only city I know that at one time did not require trash enclosures, and that's, it's a pretty sad state affairs driving up the peninsula for the older buildings. So, thank you.
Councilmember Daigle?
Yes, and that's wonderful, you got to spend some time in the Charles River. It sounds like a great trip. In terms of the agreement, having considerable contact with residents, it seems to me that the number one issue that residents have been concerned about is the, is the John Wayne Airport and viewed as the largest threat to our quality of life. And so we have now in place the settlement agreement to limit the number of passengers. We have the curfew in terms of when the planes are able to operate. And now a third agreement, which will be the city having veto authority over any physical expansion. So we continue to add to the controls in place at the airport. And I appreciate the point that it's, these agreements are very difficult, it's a very complex issue, and in terms of what the city is able to do. As far as an announcement, as we know, the city of Irvine doesn't care about traffic in Newport Beach, but the Newport Beach City Council does. And when we learn that the city of Irvine was close to approving almost 20,000 residential units right across our border on the Gemberry Corridor, and that of those, there would be high-rise condos generating as many as 40,000 trips into Newport Beach, this city council took action, and took action in form of a lawsuit, and we were joined by the city of Tustin. And I checked with the city attorney today and confirmed that the lawsuits against the developers of the two projects in the city of Irvine have been filed and that they are being served also on the city of Irvine. And the city of Newport Beach joined with the city of Tustin to challenge the approvals of these projects because both city councils are extremely concerned about the adequacy of the environmental studies and projects, and particularly the cumulative impact on our city from these two projects. So I appreciate the update from our city attorney's office on this matter. Thank you.
Councilmember Nichols?
I don't have anything specific that I wanted to discuss. I would like to find out, I have not heard and didn't read anything about the coastal agreement on dredging of the sand. Did that go through, or, and could anybody report on that? We had a dredging permit that we were talking about.
You're talking about the general dredging permit that
Yeah.
will allow people with piers the ability to dredge, and us to issue those permits?
I think yes, and we had, we're supposed to be able to issue up to 20,000 cubic yards a year could be cleaned up. Ed may have knowledge about this as well.
You want us to make a?
I'd just like to have some idea of what, what happened at the meeting and, and that we can go forth if.
You know, Mr. Homer, you can give a report in the future, but I will say that the Coastal Commission did approve the master dredging permit, allowing us to take the spoils or dredging from the majority of the bay. The only area that was constrained was right along the peninsula between around 10th down to 19th Street, which happens to be where my home is, because it has one part per billion too many of mercury, if you're ready for that.
You never picked that battery after dropping.
Yeah, and you dropped it.
It was a double-A battery.
Yeah, exactly. So anyhow, so dredging, we're back in business and, and you're maintenance dredging for your docks out there.
Okay, thank you. The next item on our agenda is the Consent Calendar.
All matters listed under Consent Calendar, Items 1 through 18, and supplemental items number 21 through 23 are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes in the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor, state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Thank you. Now it's time for the City Council to ask if they want any items removed. Councilmember Nichols, do you have any items that you're concerned with?
Yes, would you like me to wait and come at the end, or?
Why don't you do it right now?
Okay. I have some, I would like some explanations with regard to some of the coastkeeper and reforestation projects going along on the coast. And in particular, I'd like to hear some explanations of Items 8, 10, 12, and 13, which include the testing and what's happening in Buck Gully, and some of the little, the reforestation that's happening in Little Corona.
Thank you. Councilmember Daigle?
I had a, just, no items to pull, Mayor Webb. I did, however, have a comment on Item 10. Should I save that for the call-up?
Yes.
Thank you.
We'll discuss that. Councilmember Ridgeway?
I have nothing other than, as we get into Items 8, 10, 12, and 13, I want to say that as chairman of the Harbor Bay Water Quality Committee, I happen to have one, two, three, four, or three members, and then a, the Skinners are likewise here. And I'm proud to say that because we're really proud of those items, and so I believe they're here to support that, would be my guess.
Councilmember Curry?
No items to pull, Mr. Mayor, but just a brief comment on Item S22. This is the stop sign at Newport Hills Drive and Port Seaboard. This is a very important part of our traffic home. This is a very important part of our traffic calming initiative in the port streets. I was with the Homeowners Association last week. They're fully supportive of this idea. They did ask that we pull the Port Albans stop sign, which we have done, out of our traffic calming strategy at their request. So this pushes forward with the signal at Newport Hills Drive East and Port Seaborn Way, and I'll be supporting that.
Councilmember Selich.
S-21.
Councilmember Rozan, or Mayor Potem Rozansky?
None, thank you.
And I would like to pull S-23. Is there anybody from, I mean, is anybody on the staff have any items that they would like to pull?
No.
Anybody from the public have any items that have not already been pulled? We have pulled items 8, 10, 12, 13, 21, and 23. Seeing no one, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt consent calendars, items 1 through 18 and 21 through 23, with the exception of items 8, 10, 12, 13, 21, and 23.
I'll second that.
Please vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number 8, which is a resolution relating to kelp reforestation project, $5,000 expenditure to the California Coast Keeper Alliance. Mr. Nichols, what was your question?
I would just like a public explanation of the project, and I think possibly Dave's going to do that.
Mr. Kiff.
Don't give us a detail between types of kelp, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and councilmembers. Councilmember Nichols, this is a, we actually have a couple of people who are much smarter than I am about this in the audience, so they may wish to comment. But basically, this is the conclusion of a three-to-four-year process, a project that was originally started by the Orange County Coast Keeper, and then moved over to the California Coast Keeper Alliance to replant kelp off of our shores, basically from Little Corona down towards Crystal Cove. And it involved initially a NOAA grant, National Oceanic, I'm going to forget the last two.
Atmospheric.
Atmospheric Administration. So they did that, that grant, went ahead and planted the kelp. It involved a lot of public education, because the kelp beds themselves, the kelp spores were grown in local elementary schools, and then they were taken out on tiles, basically, and set down. And this is the conclusion of that program. They did run out of the NOAA grant funding and came to us through the Coastal Bay Water Quality Committee to try and get some additional funding to complete the program. And it was a $5,000 request that went through the committee, and the recommendation is to approve that request.
Is there permanent kelp now in the ocean in these areas?
I'm probably going to ask Nancy Caruso, who's here, to comment on that if she can.
I was going to suggest that. And while Nancy's coming up, I would report that our committee did have a field trip. We went out to the kelp beds by boat. There is actually a kelp bed, yes. Yeah. We did actually go to the kelp beds off of Corona del Mar, which is one of the projects. And Nancy was actually with us last year and gave us a, the whole background on it. But Nancy, I just want to let everybody know, it's pretty neat stuff.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. There is permanent kelp growing in Corona del Mar right now. It is actually the only kelp bed in Orange County at this time. Most of the, actually 99% of the kelp was wiped out last fall. In Dana Point was the last huge kelp bed by the south swells that they had, which were the strongest on record. So the kelp forest at Little Corona in Newport Beach is the only kelp forest in Orange County. So you're lucky to have that here.
Is that off the, off the beach, or where?
Little Corona, just right off the beach, yes, and about 25 feet of water.
What depth of water is that?
About 25 to 30 feet of water.
So that's out, sort of at the end of the butt?
Buck Gully.
Yes, just at Buck Gully, just outside the swim buoy.
You can swim out there.
I probably could.
You can, trust me, it's a long swim, though.
Let us know, I want to bring the whale watch boat out.
Yeah, I want to know so I can bring my harpoon.
Okay, let's get back, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Nancy, could you, could you let us know what group or organization you're with?
Sure, I'm sorry. I'm a marine biologist with the California Coast Keeper Alliance, and I've been doing this project for the last six years in Newport in Laguna Beach. The Laguna Beach right now is, is set to have their first kelp canopy in the last 25 years they haven't had kelp. And I have it coming up right now. It should be coming up this, this winter, I hope. It's about 20 feet tall. And Crystal Cove likewise has kelp coming up for this winter that was planted by us as well over the last six years.
Any questions of Nancy? Thank you very much.
No.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Well, I was just going to say, I did have the opportunity to go out with the Water Quality Committee on this excursion and be briefed on this issue. And although unlike Jack and Nancy, I didn't go in the water, but they did find out about what we're doing there, and I'd be pleased to move the item because, and I have a tremendous amount of respect, by the way, for the Coast Keeper Organization, and for the work that they do to help preserve the coast. So I would move the item.
I will second that. I will say that Nancy Gardner is on the committee, Janet Rappaport, who's here, and Randy Seaton, and of course, the Skinner's. And I know they enthusiastically recommended it for this. And quite candidly, I wish we were giving more, but it's a start.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to comment on this item? Seeing no one, second. Please vote.
Motion carries.
Item number 10, which is Little Corona Rockweed Restoration, approval of the professional services agreement with Cal State Fullerton. This is for restoration work at Little Corona Rocky Intertidal Area, and it's not to exceed price of $85,000 and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement. Mr. Nichols, did you have any specific questions, or do you wish to have Mr. Kiff give you a report?
Well, I'd like to get the report, but I, the question I have is, this is a different type of, not kelp, but a different type of sea life, is my understanding, that attaches itself to the rock base rather than more of the sand. Is that correct? And can, maybe you can help me out. I'm not a great marine biologist in this area.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, nor am I. But this is, this is indeed a different project and a different type of plant, and indeed there's a different focus to this effort. This is a part of the city's attempt to deal with a new, a newly interpreted state regulation in the California Ocean Plan that says, if interpreted literally, that we cannot discharge any water with any type of pollutant into what's called an area of special biological significance. And those exist, we have two of them in Newport Beach, one in Little, off of Little Corona, and one off of Crystal Cove. And what we're trying to do as a city, our strategy is to try and repopulate some of the impacted habitat in these two areas, so that we can go to the state and say that some discharge of water is, may be acceptable. Because we, we think the zero discharge rule is probably, if not impossible to obtain, extremely expensive to obtain. So one of our strategies, and we received a grant to do this, and this is one aspect of that grant that was awarded, is to start to repopulate that area with the species that should be there, including rockweed.
Will, will this inhibit, I mean, this is supposed to also inhibit use of the beach to, to some extent. I mean, it's, I mean, you obviously wouldn't be landing boats there, and probably, how will this affect surfing or stuff like that? I mean, is, I don't under, I do understand that we're putting this in, but to try and say that a creature should never run to the ocean, that doesn't make a whole hell of a lot of sense to me. But it seems to me that, so I'd like to understand a little better what our strategy is there, is what I'm really saying.
I guess the question is, how does this impact the public's ability to be able to use the area?
It shouldn't impact it at all. It's not the public's use that is, we're concerned about so much. It's the pollutants that come off and runoff, some from individual properties and some from the city's storm drains. And again, our strategy is to show that you can have some runoff, and, and species like rockweed will survive despite that. So it's not something that would be, remember, back at?
So this will not inhibit the beach, but this will inhibit basically the rocky structures that are a little bit to the west of the beach, and, and not usable by public anyway, right?
Yeah, think of it as, if this is below the surface of the water, obviously. I think you know that.
So this is outside the tide pool area?
Outside the tide pool area, yeah. There, obviously, rockweed could grow into the tide pool area, but that's part of what a tide pool is about. You will see some type of rockweed and related material there when, on the lowest tides.
So Dave, this is just a different type of weed park?
Yes. Kind of like the one at Jamboree and MacArthur.
With more water.
What you're basically saying, though, this will not inhibit the beach from use.
Correct, yeah. This would be there in a natural environment that people would enjoy in a safe, respectful way.
Thank you. Is anybody from the public that would like to comment on this item? Seeing no one, is there a motion?
I'll move the action.
Second.
I had a question. I had a question, just how much?
Is there discussion?
Wasn't this 85,000 or something like that?
Yes.
And how much of that will be grant, and how much of it is right out of our budget?
Well, this grant that we received is, if I remember it correctly, it's about $450,000. And we promised as a part of the grant to match it to the extent of 15%. Now, those funds are now pooled together, so the 85, you could say, is roughly 15% city and the remainder of the grant.
Well, the last thing, does this have a 23-year hooker on it?
A hooker?
And I mean to say that.
No, I remember your question.
That we keep this.
Did you know John Hooker was from Boston?
Yes. This is a different type of grant. This is a planning grant.
Is this a massage parlor thing?
Gentlemen.
It doesn't have the same time restrictions as what we're, what you're referring to with the, those are implementation of projects through the Clean Beaches Initiative. This is not associated with that grant program.
So if this doesn't work out, we're not on the hook to go plant the stuff again for the next 23 years?
That's correct, councilman.
Councilmember DeGel, you had a question?
Question for you, Dave, because I know we've had a couple conversations about this, exchange of information. And certainly, our community's always been on the leading edge of protecting water quality. And I know that we're going to have the ASBS issue discussed again with the State Water Resources Board in terms of its interpretations. Can you maybe comment on that a little bit?
Yes, Councilmember DeGel, that, as, as you and I have talked about previous to this meeting, there is an effort by some groups, like the Natural Resources Defense Council and the Ocean Conservancy, to really push for the zero discharge limit. And I think while we respect that, we also see that it's a difficult challenge for us to attain practically. The State Water Resources Control Board will be looking at this over the next several months. And I, I think at some point soon, the city may want to weigh in, while respecting water quality, looking at what, what is feasible.
Okay, and I appreciate your continuing to update us on the interpretations of these laws.
Thanks.
Thank you. Is motion in the second? Please vote.
Motion carries.
The next item is the Buck Gully Wetlands and Maintenance Road Repair Project at Fifth Avenue. Reject bids for the contract. So this is reject, the sole bid. Mr. Nichols, what is your concern about the rejection of this bid?
My concern is not only with the, with the rejection of the bid, but what the project entails. And the Gabons, I think I'm saying that right, are basically rock.
Gabions.
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 Gabions. Are rock-filled fence that, that serve to slow up the water and, and allow it to drop out some of the back, well, whatever it's carrying. And, and I, I wish, I would like a little better explanation, how that, how we get the road through there, and how we're doing this. Because the design of that, I think, is very, very important in, in cleaning up the water so it doesn't come out, or, or can be used prior to coming out in Big Corona.
I think that since this is a rejection of a bid, that we really aren't supposed to go into significant discussions related to what the project entails. I would suggest that you meet with the Public Works Director and see what the plans were. And when it comes back for a future contract advertisement or award, then we can have a more significant discussion. Because I'm assuming since these bids are rejected, that probably our staff will go back and look at some way of re-engineering this to where it will not be quite as expensive. So I, I think that really at this time, we're discussing whether or not to reject a bid, not the merits of a project. So is anybody from the public that would like to comment on this item? Seeing none?
Move the action.
Second. Please vote. Item 13. Item 13 is the Little Corona Bio Assay Testing Amendment Number One with the Professional Services Agreement with Weston Solutions. This is to approve an amendment for the Professional Services Agreement, which is to conduct bioaccumulation studies at the areas of special biological significance along Newport Coast at a not-to-exceed price of $69,000, and authorize the execution of agreement. Do you wish to have another report from Mr. Kiff on this, Mr. Nichols?
Yes, I do. I would note that the Back Bay Science Center that we spent $6 million on, we don't even have a plan to use at this point. So I would like to, to make sure that, that we're headed in a direction where we've fully prepared our, ourselves to use.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Nichols, I think some of the studies proposed within this contract could someday be done at the Back Bay Science Center. However, as we talked about with item 10, this is a comprehensive project that's underway right now relating to monitoring now the area of special biological significance off of Little Corona. The monitoring needs to be done immediately, as, and these studies are, will look at the accumulation of certain toxic pollutants into things like mussels. So we need to report these now to the state.
So what you're setting is a baseline, are you not?
We are indeed setting a baseline, that's a good way to put it.
Okay, and so now we're going to look at how well we can prevent that baseline from accumulating more of the, the bad stuff there.
Yes, that's one good way to look at it. And maybe someday these could be done at the Back Bay Science Center, but that's not up and running.
My question is, is we're the first city on the coast to take this on, are we not?
We're, we're one of the fir, one of the first. I don't know that we're the first, because everyone, every city that had an ASBS got a letter about a year ago now. I know that Scripps Institute in San Diego is a little bit ahead of us. They're not a city, obviously, but they're doing similar monitoring programs.
Off of, off of San Diego, you said?
That's right, at La Jolla, yeah.
Thank you. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to comment on this item?
Move the action.
Thank you, please vote.
Motion carries.
Item number 21 was a supplemental item that is the Professional Services Agreement with Hogal Ireland Incorporated for Interim Planning Director and Budget Amendment to Transfer Funds Professional Services Account. That was Mr. Selich pulled this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to recommend to the council that we modify the term of this agreement to five months, which means the term would be the 31st day of March 2007, and change the monetary amounts in accordance with that. And also, I'd like to recommend that the city manager give us a monthly report on progress being made in this item, and it can just be a receive-and-file item that comes to the council. I don't think we need a presentation, but at least something to keep us apprised as to the progress that's being made. So I would, I would make that a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Is there any discussion in the council? Is there anybody from the public that wishes to comment on this item?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Dolores Otting. I live in Newport. I live in Newport Beach. Does everyone know that Patty Temple is leaving? Have you made the announcement to the public that that's what this is about? Do they know?
It was made about, I think it was at the last council meeting.
Okay, well, she's leaving February first. So is Hogel Island, i- is that the same company that came to the study session a couple of weeks ago that did the discussion of the planning department? Okay, so will this, because you're going to be cutting down the timeframe and getting these monthly reports, and because the planning department is going to be going through some changes evidently, 'cause things aren't working to the best that they can, considering the building conditions, I'm sure that will have something to do with it in the end. But Councilmember Selich had an idea, and I can't think of the term, but it was for a different type of planning department, and so is that going to be incorporated when Hogel Island takes over, to look at different ways to improve the planning?
There was a community development director and the city manager will be bringing, bringing back in late November a report on that whole concept, so the, yes, we're ahead of you, Dolores.
No, well, I'm just asking, 'cause it's not in this.
We try!
It's not in this report, and you don't know how much I'm gonna miss you, so I, I saw you this afternoon.
Thanks, Dolores.
Also, with, in another issue, so, okay, so that will be discussed, and we'll be looking at that. Okay, thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, we have a motion on the floor, please vote.
Motion carries.
The item S twenty-three was one that I pulled. It's the Santa Ana Heights Equestrian Facility Amendment Number One to Professional Services Agreement with Fusco Engineering, in which we were going to expand their contract by thirty-three thousand dollars to do water quality studies, as well as some drilling for determining the, the type of water that, or the water condition down below. This is, the reason why I'm pausing here is I'm, I was looking at what the original contract amount was, and I'm not finding it here. But at any rate, I guess that my question is, where is, um, this is in the Santa Ana Redevelopment Agency, and we did. Pardon? Uh, this is along the Santa Ana Delhi Channel, but this is a part of the Redevelopment Agency, was going to be a project which I thought was going to be reimbursed by the Redevelopment Agency. Did I, am I remembering this correctly?
Mr. Mayor, you're remembering this correctly, but you should follow up with a question on that funding issue.
Okay, the question then is, with the county having an item on their agenda today in which they, their staff had recommended that the Redevelopment Agency ultimately be closed down with no more expenditures, maybe I'm not interpreting everything that was correct. It was pulled from their agenda, and they did not actually discuss it, but are we perhaps getting a little ahead of ourselves on this particular project in assuming that the county Redevelopment Agency will pay for this?
Mr. Mayor, I think the, the landscape has changed since this agenda item came out, in that we saw the staff's recommendation, and that was to not spend any more money on redevelopment projects. We're talking about the county not spending any more money on redevelopment projects, other than those projects had entered into an agreement prior with the City of Newport Beach, and those were the fire station project and the community center project, four-point-one million for the fire station, eleven-point-five for the community center. This is a project that we had talked with Supervisor Silva before and staff, and it was the understanding, even though it wasn't included in a written agreement, that we would move forward with it and it would be reimbursed by RDA funds. I think that is an open question right now. I'm going to have a conversation with the CEO, Tom Mock, tomorrow as to why that item got pulled, where he sees it going, so I can get a, an understanding of what's happening at the county with, with redevelopment, and what staff's final recommendation is going to be, because evidently, what, what I heard was, he was uncomfortable with that staff recommendation. So at this point, I certainly can't sit here before you and say that if we move forward with this project, it is going to be reimbursed by redevelopment funds through the county. We are into this project, some amount, I think sixty-five, seventy thousand dollars. So it is certainly an issue worth discussing at this point.
And this would add another thirty-three thousand, bringing it up to a hundred thousand dollars. What is the approximate estimate of the construction of the project if it is fully implemented?
The project itself involves the installation of basically poles in a, in a field that's been graded and has some footings associated with it. The project could involve the restoration of an old arena that's up on a mesa, depending on what the Coastal Commission requires. So we see it as anywhere from a hundred thousand dollar project to a two-hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar project, not counting this design, recognizing that the design is a big part of this, because it's in a flood control area in the coastal zone and adjacent to Upper Newport Bay, so thus the contract with Fusco to make sure that we have the appropriate water quality controls.
Okay, so that ultimately, the city could be obligated to as much as, if we go forward with a project, as much as four hundred thousand dollars would be kind of the upper end, do you think?
I would think that would be the upper end, and, and again, as Homer mentioned, our, our intent was that this would be RDA reimbursable. I think if we see that continuing to be problematic, that Homer and I discussed this earlier today, that maybe we stop here and see what happens, and then you folks may want to consider adding this as a CIP item. It is a well-supported project by the community. It's not as, doesn't have the contention of the other ones, but it, it will be a funding issue for you.
Would, all right, let me just ask one more question. If we were to say, continue this for two months, as far as this engineering design is concerned, would that significantly delay our ability to do the project in the future? And the reason why I'm looking at a delay is in hopes of learning a little bit better from the county, what their staff meant about the Redevelopment Agency status in the future, as well as any funding of projects. Uh, do you think, Homer, we would be able to get some sort of information to the county within that timeframe?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, I've been, I've, I've kind of monopolized the conversation here, but I, I had a number of questions. Councilmember Deagle, I know that you, this is your project, and I'm very concerned.
It, it's located in my district, and certainly our city council funds many recreation projects, you know, from swimming to the Sunset Park, and these are all great projects to support those. This is our first opportunity to fund an equestrian arena. As we know, every time we have a horse trail issue, people show up, they're very passionate about this activity. I think people have felt that they've waited all this long time, working with the county, and, and I'd like to see the momentum of this project continue. I think it's very important to the constituents that live there, and, and I support that it continue. So I would, I would make a motion to fund this item.
Or not continue.
No, I want to continue, I want to fund the water quality study, the hydrology study.
You're making an alternative motion.
Yes, thank you.
Nobody's made any motions yet.
Done?
No, I did not make a motion, I was asking a question.
Well, I'll make the first motion, that we fund this item as recommended by staff.
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Nichols?
Uh, just a couple of comments. I guess, I don't know for sure, but it, I've heard stories that this upper part of this road that leads down here, and in fact, the road may be under some private property constraints. Are we gonna be hip with this later on, or do we feel very secure on that?
There, um, there's currently some discussion with the property owner adjacent to that, and there's quite a bit of dispute over that thirty-foot strip, so we're working with them, and we'll probably be working with the county with regards to the city, hopefully eventually taking that property over, so that we can maybe incorporate it into the trail system. But there isn't any plans for it right now, but we are working with them so that we don't end up.
But, but it's not a clear title to that.
It isn't, but that's as to the property owners, there's two adjoining property owners that have differing opinions on what the real title is. Our discussions right now have been kind of centered around the fact that maybe we could come up with an agreement that would, wouldn't require what would probably be a very lengthy type of a quiet title action to trying to determine what the real title is, because of that dispute. The city wouldn't be involved in that dispute, but it might be easier resolved if we can come up with a plan that works, that the city would, the city council would find acceptable. But we're not there yet.
I've, I've, I just brought up another question. Who actually owns the property that the horse rink is gonna be on?
Orange County Flood Control District.
Considering the county's position related to the park site, are they're going to give us problems related to us doing some project on county property?
Well, we, we have approached them at a staff level as, as much as two years ago to discuss, it would be basically an encroachment permit relationship, where if they needed to do the work there, they could ask us to remove it.
Is the encroachment permit approved by the county, by the supervisors?
It was a, no, it needs to still go to them. Um, and part of the encroachment permit would describe these improvements, and the planning has to occur before the improvements can be described, so we're kind of in a catch-twenty-two. We could stop now and, and not have the ability to apply for those, those permits and not know, or we could proceed further and, and take our chances.
But, you know.
I want, sorry, I wanted to answer one more of Mayor Webb's questions. He asked, is, is this timely now, and, and could it be continued? It could, but the purpose of this contract is relating to monitoring storm events in the area, so if we, we could, we'll probably hit some storm events certainly January through February, but it'd be nice to get the first flush if we can, which I would expect to see at least in December.
The other question, Dave, was the upper part of this road. Is this, uh, uh, caused a problem for even the horses on the steepness getting down there? Is this something that's a trail that can be used by all? Is this something that has to be improved to be properly used?
Mr. Nichols, horses get down there now, but that, I think we do need to do an analysis of, once the, if the arena does go forward and is in, does that accessway right below Mesa Drive need to be improved? We'll need to look at that.
I think we need to ask the city attorney as whether or not, how, how easy it is to walk down that roadway.
I'm not gonna go that far. Uh, question though, should this be incorporated in this contract, or are they entirely different? You're really talking about a water quality contract aspect of this?
This is an expansion of the engineering design contract, and it's one of the elements that is needed, as I understand it, to answer questions that may be asked at the Coastal Commission, and, and I had forgotten about the one point related to this being connected with the, the storm flows and trying to get this year's storm season under the belt, and so that answers my concerns related to whether or not we need to do it now, because if we don't do it now, that means we are held off until next year, and so that would mean a whole four-year delay. I'm, I'm willing, I'm willing to, to put up another thirty thousand dollars or thirty-three thousand dollars to, to get those questions answered, have a project ready, but I'm not really ready to commit yet to the city funding this a hundred percent without redevelopment, reimbursement.
Well, that's, um, good that you're.
Could we include that fee, that little arc, that feature, engineering feature, that, an evaluation of the, the road itself as to whether it's usable as it is?
We could, but not a part of this contract. This is just focusing on the water quality impacts, but.
And it's, it's not necessary at this time, particularly since the city doesn't right now have any ownership interest in it.
Yeah, and the dollar amount of this hydrology study is only twenty-nine thousand one fifty. The original conceptual grading topograph was thirty-three. Sonia, I'll make a motion for approval, or, there is a motion, there is a second, I'm sorry.
I do have a comment that I've been trying to make.
Councilmember Rosansky, would you like to offer a comment?
Yes, I would like to offer a comment, because, and I will be voting in support of this, but, you know, I, I think this is kind of a slippery slope that we're traveling down.
For the horses.
For the horses and for our, for our city as well. I mean, I don't really, it's not really a joke, because we've relied on representations of the county that we were gonna, you know, in good faith, we've gone forward on a lot of projects. This is, this is chump change compared to the multimillion-dollar fire station that we're building that we thought were gonna be reimbursed on, which even with what the county's committed, we're still gonna be on the hook for millions of dollars for that. We're in the midst of an undergroundy project up there that they have not committed to funding, that we spent probably hundreds of thousands of dollars on studies and things that may never come to fruition now, that, you know, if the residents don't want to elect to go forward with it, if the county doesn't pick it up. We have a community center that we spent a lot of time and effort on, and they've also agreed to fund a portion of that, but not nearly what it looked like it was gonna take. So, you know, by us moving forward and still committing our own money, oh, and today I sat in on a meeting where they approved our airport agreement, which was great, but council, or board member Norby, who voted against agreement, spent ten minutes talking about the park and how the city was benefiting by, you know, that the county was gonna build us a park on county-owned land, which was really RDA money on RDA land, and it's not. But, you know, they have this idea that somehow we're, we're, you know, taking advantage of the county or getting more than what we're entitled to, and by us continuing to fund these projects, it just reinforces their belief that they don't need to pay for these things, that the city of Newport Beach will pay for them, because that we, we have the money, and they don't need to spend their forty million dollars that they're sitting on at the county. So I will support it because of the, the need, I guess, to catch the first flush here in plumber terms, but, you know, as these projects move forward and we continue to look at spending money on them, I think we as a city have to look very closely at that and, and, and put the pressure back on the county now. Let the residents go to the county where the forty million dollars is, not to the city, where we have, you know, obviously, we have resources here, we're not a poor city. But it just allows them to, to, to do what they want with that redevelopment agency, and it's not fair to our city, because we have a lot of our own tax dollars invested in that forty million dollars, and it's not fair to the residents there who have waited patiently for years for these projects to be completed. And so, you know, I, I, I'm gonna vote for it reluctantly, but I will vote for it, but we need to be cognizant of that.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Selich?
Yeah, I have the same concerns that Councilman Rosansky expressed. I'm gonna support it also, but I think there's a lot of unanswered questions out there. Homer, could you just clarify again on the fire station? Based on where we stand right now, what's your understanding of what the whole funding situation with the fire station is? How much have we spent? How much has the county given us so far? And what is your understanding that they're agreeing to right now to reimburse us for what, what we've spent out there?
I think we entered into an agreement with the county that's two years old now regarding the fire station and community center. Community center was to be reimbursed to the tune of eleven-point-five million dollars, which was to include land acquisition and structure. No money has been basically spent, and no money has been requested from the county. The fire station project was four-point-one million, and I think they have reimbursed us, they have not reimbursed us one-point-five million. Dave, correct me if I'm wrong.
That's right, Homer.
So those are the two agreements that, based upon the staff report that came out and that was pulled off of the agenda yesterday for today's agenda, said, you know, we have those commitments, they can't get out of those commitments, they can't get out of those dollar amount commitments, but the staff report said we aren't, let's not fund anything else, let's save money so that we can end the redevelopment agency early in two thousand twelve, thirteen. Whether that remains the staff recommendation in the future, I'm not certain. That's what I said, I'm gonna have that conversation with Mr. Mock tomorrow to try and find out what in the heck is going on over there.
Well, we agreed to fund that fire station. You indicated we were gonna get another seven-point-four, something like that, from the county.
I, I was hoping to get another seven-point-four. I had that commitment from, from Tom Mock, he said he was going to, he felt like the county owed us that, and he was going to get it to us. That was probably.
Is that still his position, or has he changed on that now?
I, I think it is his position. My question to him is going to be, where does he feel like the board sits on that?
And based upon the tenor of the comments today, at least one or two of the board members are not in favor, maybe even more, of reimbursing us that money.
Well, and there's gonna be a new board, some new board members after November, and it may be that one of those seats is vacant and that they're operating with a four-person board.
Right, so there's a lot of, I guess what we're seeing is a lot of uncertainty. We fronted a lot of money in good faith on promises of the, the county CEO and what we thought was the, the, the tenor of the, of the board, and it's looking like things are not exactly what we thought, so I think we need to be careful in moving forward.
Thank you. Is, is there anybody in the public that wishes to comment on this? Just, okay, Mr. Curry?
Just briefly, Mr. Mayor, I want to agree with Mr. Rosansky and Mr. Selich on this. I think it's clear that there's some members of the board supervisors who are suffering perhaps a little zip code envy, and we need to rethink our relationship in terms of a lot of the issues with the county, and make sure we're negotiating strategically on these going forward in, in terms of making sure the commitments are properly documented. In deference to the equestrians and to the work done by the Santa Ana Heights PAC, and to the importance of this project to the community, I'm gonna support the motion as well, but I believe we do need to look comprehensively at where we go with all of these projects in the future.
Dave?
If I could just say one thing, I mean, I certainly agree with that. It is very frustrating from our staff's point of view, I think the last. I think the last year and a half of our spheres agreement was probably 90% spent on redevelopment issues, the most complex part of this. We briefed all of the supervisors during this process more than once. We had those discussions with county staff. We ended up with county staff feeling like they could recommend certain things and that has not happened. So, believe me, you're frustrated, I'm very frustrated over the situation. It isn't finished, but we intend to push for what I think we all think is just, you know, a fair deal.
Okay, thank you. Members of the public wishing to comment on this item?
Hi, my name is Dolores Otting. I remember the days of the bankruptcy. I used to go to the county meetings a lot in those days and there was an enterprise fund for the Integrated Waste Management Department and that enterprise fund was to handle all of the landfills within the county for cleanup and for possible contamination exposure. And that fund in those days, I don't know, I don't remember exactly if it was 98 million or $123 million. And they took all that money and it was an enterprise fund, which meant that it was only there for a designated reason and designated purpose, like the airport is an enterprise fund. And they took the $123 million and they put it towards the dead of the bankruptcy and that was the end of it. So, I see, I'm kind of confused as to how we're sitting here talking about this because the fire station, we've gotten $1.5 million and we've all been here for a while on this subject, we all know, remember? And we spent more money than we thought on the property and we got a larger fire station than we really needed because we can't even, we aren't even going to have enough equipment in that fire station yet. It's one of those things that will grow with time and will add people. So, is there, if we're not going to get this money, because that fire station's like eight or nine million dollars, isn't it? I mean, it's not a joke. So, we only got one and a half million dollars so far. So, is there a way that we could downzone the fire station? I mean, probably not, not yet, but because...
Would you like to take some of the concrete blocks off that have been put up?
Yeah, I know. And then, and then we also have the community center. You talk about 11 and a half million, but the last time it came before the council, it was a $20 million project. So, we don't even have plans for an 11 and a half million dollar project. I, I don't know, we talk money in the city and then we don't have any, I know this is not on the item, but you guys brought it up. So, anyway, I'm wondering how, how, how they collect the money as a redevelopment agency and then they don't give it to the people. I mean, how do you do that? So, isn't that something we should be looking at? How do they do that? I'd like to know.
We've been asking those questions for a number of years.
Aren't you supposed to like maybe get an attorney to find out how they do that? We, you know, we're suing Irvine, why not? Let's sue the county for $40 million. I, it's not right, it isn't right. Because they're, they're used to acting this way. And anyway, thank you because, I don't know, it's a big mess. Thank you. It's not my mess.
Anybody else? Seeing no one, there's a motion on the floor in a second. Please vote.
Motion carries.
We are now finished with the consent calendar. The next item on our agenda is public comments. Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter. jurisdictions of the council, speakers must limit their comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. Any public comments?
Hi, my name's Dolores Otting and I'm running for city council in Newport Beach and I have this slogan that I love, Mayor Webb, and it's that, it's that Newport Beach is a community and not a commodity. And what I'm up here about for this public comment is Measure W. Last week, the Register, as a matter of fact, Jeff Overly did a really nice piece on our ballot, Measure W. And of course, the Daily Pilot hasn't picked it up yet, but I'm just going to read the little concise version of it and it says, Measure W and its problems. The city of Newport Beach shall not exercise the power of eminent domain to acquire any property from the owner of the property without the owner's consent for the sole purpose of transferring the property to another person to further private economic development. By using the word "sole," the measure leaves the door open for eminent domain uses with a broad public purpose, such as new jobs or tax revenue. The issue that made Kelo versus the City of New London ruling controversial, experts say. This was looked at by, I think, three or four constitutional attorneys. And one of the comments and one of the quotes were that Newport's measure only affirms the long-held principle, experts say. It forbids taking land for the sole purpose of transferring the property to another person for private economic development. And evidently, such seizures were deemed unconstitutional in a 1798 U.S. Supreme Court ruling. So, it goes on in this little box to say that, that sole purpose of giving it is already unconstitutional. And by us not defining economic development, the measure leaves wiggle room for projects pursued under the guise of community development or similar monkeyers, experts say. Similar measures in Anaheim and Dana Point specifically, excuse me, similar measures in Anaheim and Dana Point specify for-profit ventures, making them more restrictive. So, it was also said, and thank you, Mr. Curry, that if it was broken, we would fix it later on, okay? But, we're going to vote on it now and it seems like we have a lot of flawed things up there. We have, we have, um, Measure X?
Like Measure X.
And, okay, we also have V because, believe me, that isn't all it's cracked up to be. And now we have W. So, we have alphabet soup up there, all right? And, um, okay, well, this is my public comment, so you can have your turn, I'm sure, okay? But, anyway, I just want the public to know that there are some problems with this and I would be hoping that you would be addressing these issues because this is going to be part of our charter, right? I mean, this is what we're doing this for and we don't waste time on elections or anything else and so this is a big deal, okay? Thank you very, very much.
Anybody else wishing to have a public comment?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I see you're all beaming in anticipation of another, another erudite comment.
Phil, I have waited weeks to see you again.
It's nice to see you, though.
Appreciate that. It's a shame it'll be broken up and I hope I'm not being charged time for this.
You're not.
But, my name's Philip Arst, I'm the spokesperson for the Greenlight Residents Group. We've become disturbed at what we see as a election consisting of some personal attacks and Barbara Venecia comes to mind, Jack Wu was attacked, and a great deal of misleading rhetoric that we believe has no place in an election in a municipal city like this. We're not in Washington, we're not in Sacramento and we think things could be conducted more honorably. To name some of the false claims or misleading claims, it's a combination of both, that we've seen, we've seen Measure V come out, say it protects green light, only after the public has accepted 125,000 more car trips a day, 20% population increase. Essentially, green light is rendered inactive for that whole period. You claim Measure V is a residence plan. Well, six, all seven of you are residents, six voted for it and that's very close to the extent of the residential support. I know whenever we've put in residential inputs, they've been ignored. You claim you reduce traffic and just last week in the pilot, several of the participants, supporters of Measure V said that, yes, we create approximately the same 18 unsatisfactory intersections that the current general plan would create. We're close to that. So, for the first time, all this phony comment about reducing traffic is admitted by, by the Measure V group, that they create close 18 unsatisfactory intersections. That means the traffic increase. Another claim that's being thrown at us, Measure X impacts your house. Absolutely not. Remodeling additions to a home are excluded in the right, in the definition section of the initiative. Measure X will cause expensive legal bills. Well, let's look at the history of green light, the original green light, two elections in six years. That's not an onerous burden on the city, but what it does is it shows that our opponents have so little in the way of valid arguments against us that they concoct these crazy stories. And I don't think that serves the public well. Measure X, X's major attribute is that it provides residents with the right to vote. And you can express your opinion if a big project is going to cause traffic or too much high density near your home, it gives the residents a chance to vote. We have a poll of a thousand residents, thank you, and a poll's been cited by your side and said, we've contacted the residents and we, we're supported by some 3,000 residents. Well, the poll was completely disregarded. So, anyways, I close and thank you, thank you for the smiles and the attention. Good night.
I, it's kind of interesting, the, as far as 18 unsatisfactory intersections are concerned, I believe that we had a report from the, from Sharon Wood. Would you like to comment on what that report was at the last meeting?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. 18 is the correct number for full buildout of the existing general plan, but the new general plan, which is what's on the ballot with Measure V, would reduce that number to two.
So, a reduction from 18 intersections to two unacceptable intersections.
And that's, and that's a revised number as a result of the reductions in the land use plan that the city council made before adopting it.
Can I ask where those were?
The two intersections are at, on Coast Highway at Marguerite and Goldenrod.
And were all feasible alternatives suggested for, considered to lower this to D as supposed to be done in the general plan?
The feasible alternatives were looked at and those alternatives that were acceptable were considered and it's still...
Acceptable to the community in general.
Point of order, this is actually an improper discussion at this point. You're right.
Mr. Mayor, may I just make a, Mr. Curry, a quick comment? Relative to the story on Measure W that appeared in the Register, let me just say, first of all, that nobody was more upset than me to see that the law professors from as far away as Virginia were nitpicking the language in the measure. But, let me say that for there to be any invalidation of Measure W, a city council up here would have to take an action in contradiction of what I believe is going to be a 70% vote on Measure W. And then that would have to be adjudicated in the courts, who would look at the legislative history, which I think has been clearly established on this measure, in opposition to using eminent domain to take private property for private economic gain. And then, once...
I think that we are getting a little bit far away from public comment.
But, let me say that between our existing ordinance and Measure W and potentially Prop 90, we're going to kill eminent domain abuse quite dead in this community and if we don't, we'll come back and drive a stake through its heart once again.
Yes, Councilman...
I'd like to make one other comment since that there wasn't any comment, there was no comment from anybody that was reviewing, any of these constitutional scholars that were reviewing the measure, that said that it was unconstitutional. In fact, I guess what their point was that somehow or another, it was only restating already constitutionally established issues, which I might disagree with. But, the bottom line is that they only came up with criticisms on what might happen on how some council might choose to get around it. And so, I didn't really find that there was a significant criticism of its effectiveness, only some sort of potential speculative criticism.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wish to have a public comment? One more.
Good evening, Mayor. My name is George Schroeder and I'd like to make a few remarks about Measure V, the general plan. This is the traffic study here, I'm sure you've all seen this. I actually took the time, I probably spent about 10 to 15 hours reviewing every page of the traffic study with a highlighter pen and post-it notes and this is the general plan and I actually reviewed all of the pages of this and the land use maps. And I can say that the new general plan does not add 120,000 more trips, okay? What that does is as you've stated, if you take what is existing on the ground now, okay, and then if we have build out, okay, well, the current plan would actually give us more trips, okay? So, I'm enthusiastically supporting the general plan. I think it's good for the residents of Newport Beach. I'm very concerned about private property rights and all of my friends who live up in Harbor Ridge and Spyglass, my friends who live in Cameo Shore, my friends who live on Valvolde Island, my friends who live on the peninsula here, it does reinforce your current land uses and the entitlements you have now. Any housing that has been added with this new general plan has only been added because the current landholder has reduced commercial buildable area. And I believe that a residential use in those commercial areas probably would lessen traffic because if you drive through a business district or through a residential area, you're going to obviously get more traffic where there's retail and commercial and office buildings, especially at peak hour times, because they all come and go at the same time. So, and as for it not being a residence plan, you know, on this mail out here, you know, I see my friends like Val Scora who lives in Irvine Terrace, I see Marion Bergerson, BJ Johnson, Carvana Del Mar, Paula Godfrey, Valvolde Island, Tom and Jean Notton from the airport working group, My Name Is Don here, and just hundreds and hundreds of residents have all supported the plan. So, and also I'd like to say it's available to be viewed at the city webpage. And yes, Mayor, the web address is a bit long. The easiest way for me to get there is just to go to any search engine, type in "city of Newport Beach," search and then it pops right up. So, that's what I would recommend.
Thank you.
So, I would like to encourage everybody to vote for Measure V.
Thank you. Any further comments?
I'm Nancy Gardner. I was co-chair of the General Plan Advisory Committee and I'd just like to take exception to the idea that this was not a creation of residents. We had 38 residents working on the plan over the four and a half years and at every meeting, we had public comments and we always had an audience and we always had comments and many of those comments were incorporated into the plan. So, it is reflective, I think, of the great majority of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a question there. Doesn't it odd that the plan was very, very significantly changed after the residents input came in?
No, the policies weren't changed. The numbers were changed and they were reduced and I don't think anybody was arguing with that. But, the policies, I sat here at every meeting and so many times, I can remember the council asking me, well, what was GPAC's thinking on this? And I would explain how we came at that particular decision and then the council voted to support the GPAC.
And the council voted to support a downzoning of R2 to R1 and that was supported by all the people, huh?
Excuse me, excuse me, this is not a debate on one item or the other. This is a public comment period. I would please ask that you respect that and...
I have finished my public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to have a public comment? Thank you. The next item on our agenda is oral reports from the city council members. As I go through there, is there any council member that has a report on a committee that they serve on, that they feel obligated to report on?
Good.
Seeing none, next item on the agenda is item 19, which is the Planning Commission agenda for October 19.
And I will be doing that this evening, Mr. Mayor, even though I have to confess I was not at the meeting because the planning director is at the State Planning Conference this evening, receiving an award of merit for our coastal land use plan. It was a busy night at the Planning Commission. The first item was once again, the Newport Beach Brewing Company and once again, that was continued. This is a review of a longstanding use permit and there have been complaints from the neighbors and the staff is continuing to work with the business owner and the police department and the business owner's attorney to identify both problems and potential solutions to those. The next item was a code amendment regarding marine charter land use and parking regulations. The focus of the Planning Commission's discussion was the planning director's approval of off-site parking agreements and the ability of members of the public to appeal those. And an appeal provision was written into the draft ordinance, but we did not include notice to surrounding property owners. The Planning Commission recognized that this is something that needs to keep moving so they went ahead and recommended this amendment, but also asked that when it comes to the city council, that we look at providing some form of public notice to help make that appeal process more effective. And then... And then a second code amendment was considered for group presidential facilities. This is in response to some concerns we've had, especially in the Santa Ana Heights area, with single-family homes operating as boarding houses. And so this would add to our code a definition of boarding house or rooming house. And that would be that it couldn't have more than one lease agreement. On this one, the Planning Commission thought that perhaps we had been too stringent, and so they recommended the amendment, but increasing the number of lease agreements that would be needed before it crosses the line to becoming a boarding house. And I think that when this comes to the city council, the city attorney is going to want to have some more input on that.
Did they discuss the concept between oral lease agreement and written lease agreement?
I do not know.
Were you better at that?
And then one more code amendment. This is with regard to large daycare facilities with eight or 14 people, and these can be either for children or adults. Once again, this is responding to some concern in the community about over-concentration of these large facilities, and this is something that the state actually allows us to regulate. So we were proposing standards that would deal with over-concentration, and the Planning Commission was concerned that we hadn't adequately addressed parking, especially for state-required employees, as well as safe drop-off of the participants. So they continued that item, and that will not be coming to city council yet. And finally, they considered an addition to the Holiday Inn Express in Mariners Mile. And the major concern with that item was whether there should be some sort of an easement at the rear of the property to provide access to the city's Avon Street parking lot. So for further consideration of that, as well as for more information on how well the project complies with the design framework for Mariners Mile, that was also continued.
Thank you. Any questions of Sharon Wood? Seeing none, anybody from the audience have any questions? This is a receive and file. The next item on our agenda is the mayor's appointment to the 1-1 Memorial Committee, and my appointment would be that of Keith Currie.
Should we have to motion that?
Would, yeah, so you're supposed to confirm it.
I'll make a motion to do, to confirm your nomination.
I'll second that motion. Councilman Currie, maybe you can give a plug for this night?
Well, I appreciate that cue, and I certainly will. This night is Thursday. I am pleased to say that it is sold out. It is a great opportunity for the community to honor the Marines of the 1-1 and have a great experience, to show how this community has really taken that unit under its wing to support not only the troops, but also their families. And I know that it's going to be a great evening, it'll be very meaningful for the troops, as will the action of this council in moving forward with this monument proposal. And I appreciate very much the mayor's appointing me to this committee.
Thank you. Does anybody from the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion, Currie's.
Next item on the agenda is supplemental item number 24, which is the city council reconsideration of the previously approved spheres Agreement, now revised, dealing with JWA Upper and Lower Bay issues, and deleting a Santa Ana Heights park project and horse trail provisions. City Manager?
I think the title says it all. The city council took this action on the 10th. Since that time, the agreement has been revised due to some controversy on the Santa Ana Heights issues on the Board of Supervisors. So this is the same agreement you approved, just with the deletion of those issues. All of the rest of the wording is the same.
Thank you very much. Again, I'd like to reemphasize, the Board of Supervisors approved this agreement this morning, and I think it's a great event for the city to have. Councilmember Ridgeway, you indicated there were some things you wished to say.
Well, first, I'd like to make a motion for approval. As, actually, I've been chairman of this committee, and it has been in existence for four years. And it is a legacy for the citizens of this city. It's a, it is clearly a document that will survive the settlement agreement. There was a question at the county today from county council whether this would bind future Board of Supervisors, and I think after much hemming and hawing, the county council said, yes, it would. There was some argument by some people that it would not have a long-term impact, but it appears that it will. So I, I think the battle of the airport is, we always have to be ever vigilant, but this is another, and this is a huge arrow in our quiver, that again, effectively was, is we have to approve any expansion or operational changes, it effectively is a veto power. I would make a comment. It is unfortunate that the other spheres issues dropped out, especially in the last six months. The redevelopment package, the small park, the upper and lower bay, the Dunes Agreement and Tidelands, but I'm of the opinion that those will all come back, and they will all come back in our favor. We put a number of things up there that we thought were, were policy issues and efficiency issues, where we could run things better than the county. And having endured the negotiation with the county supervisors, especially during the last 12 months, Homer and I played tag team quite a bit. I spent hours with each supervisor at different times. Homer was with Tom Mock, and then equally with supervisors. I think I, if there was any surprise to me, and the continued ongoing negotiation was the, how it changed, and it changed what, Homer, daily almost? I mean, hourly. And I can say, I shared with Jack and Nancy Skinner, I had to drive to a couple of supervisors' homes in the evening time to try to put things back together, and then Homer would pick up the pieces in the morning. And it was rather a fascinating process. But at the end of the day, through perseverance, quite candidly, and perseverance, and frustration, no doubt about that, we prevailed. And to the citizens of the community, I want to say congratulations. I think this is a well-deserved, long-overdue agreement, cooperative agreement, but there is much more work to be done here in the future for future councils, and, but the, the blueprint has been established, and I think the subject matters have been established, and it can only get better. Quite candidly, it can only get better.
Any other...
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to comment on this before we have public comments? Mr. Nichols?
I just wondered if I could get Homer's comments possibly on, I think there's some provision in here that would, that no annexation shall be asked for by the city without the county's consent, or would you explain that a little bit?
Well, one of the things that we gave to the county was saying that we would not annex any of John Wayne Airport or the property that the county has in the country club area, that it could eventually extend a runway, even though this agreement covers that, and we would have veto power over that. So state law right now requires us to get the county's permission prior to annexing any county property, so we're not really giving up anything. This is just something that basically restates state law requirement as it is today.
So, so basically, you're, you're reading on this is that the, the Airport Commission does not act separately than the County Land Commissioner, or whatever the term is?
No, we're talking about two different entities here, two different legal entities. But for the city to annex any or all of John Wayne Airport, we would have to have the county's permission, not the Airport Land Use Commission's authority. It would be the property owner, which is basically the county. So this just states that we couldn't do that without their permission, which restates what the requirement is today.
But it also leaves all that land in the county's possession, right?
And, and they wouldn't get rid of it anyway, so...
Yeah, I mean, but if they wanted to put a second airport in, that, the footprint isn't large enough for them to do that. They have to acquire property to do that. And this particular agreement... But who owns the property to Red Hill? Is that the property between the airport and Red Hill?
There's a lot of private property there.
Yes. No, but I mean, is that Costa Mesa, or is that...
Costa Mesa, that's in the city of Costa Mesa.
So that, that is also a...
Yes, they would have to get Costa Mesa's permission to purchase property in that area also.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just say one, one more thing, and the council certainly deserves a lot of credit, but I would be remiss if I didn't single out Dave Kiff and Bob Burnham for their valiant efforts over the years to make this date happen.
Thank you very much. Anybody from the public wish to comment on this item? You've been very patient.
Well, today is a... Today is a very special day. My name is Jack Skinner, and I was at the County Board of Supervisors meeting this morning because Nancy and I live under the airport pattern, and I was concerned if they do extend the runway, the impact on the Moose Center would make it unusable. This was the most interesting experience of my life in a political arena, to watch what happened at that meeting. Somebody got up from South County and, and really articulated why it's important not to have the hands of the Boards of Supervisors tied on this airport issue and not to grant the agreement. There were three Board of Supervisors, Wilson, Silva, and Campbell, who believed in the quality of life issue, and I really didn't know what was going to happen. I was so impressed and proud of the council when Don got up and gave his presentation, and Homer got up and gave his, but they were supported by Steve Rosansky, and Dave Kiff was there. And when they took that vote, nobody really knew until that last vote came. I thought that's the greatest thing for the city of Newport Beach, that we ought to put this agreement under glass with a light shining on it in the lobby of our new city hall. Because finally, finally, we've got something to protect the residential quality of this community, and I really want to commend all of you involved, but especially the people that were there today that made it happen. Obviously, it happened because of work like Todd had been doing and Homer had been doing for a long time, but there were some votes actually changed during the time that we were right in that audience, and we only, that was a squeaker, and what you did made it a winning proposition. I want to thank you very much.
Thank you, Jack.
Well, you know how it is in our family. We both have to talk. I'm Nancy Skinner, and we both came tonight to thank you in anticipation of your vote tonight, which I'm sure will be in support of this agreement. You have, this is an historic evening, with the supervisors having approved it this morning, you anticipating your approval tonight. It is a huge, huge step forward for the city of Newport Beach on the airport issue, and we do thank you so much for what you've done, staff, Dave, Homer, and whoever, whoever else has worked with you and the staff and the council. Those who weren't even here tonight, as Don Webb mentioned, there are others who were on the council earlier that worked on it too, but Todd has certainly done a human's work on this too. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to comment? Seeing none, let's bring it back. Any further comments on the council? Please vote.
Motion, Currie's.
With an effective date of November the 1st.
November the 1st, okay, good. The next item on our agenda is item, supplemental item number 25, which is the results of the final fiscal impact analysis of the general plan update. Assistant City Manager Wood, is that your report?
That is mine, Mr. Mayor. And this is the last report, I promise, that I will be giving you on this general plan update. The fiscal impact model is the last analysis that, that we had done on the land use plan that the council approved in July, and as we had expected from our early analysis of the land use alternatives, it is positive. So it is anticipated to return to the city a little over $2 million more in revenue than it will cost to provide municipal services for all those land uses, and that's a better result than the existing general plan, which is at about $1.4 million to the positive.
Any questions of Ms. Wood? Is there anybody in the public wish to comment on this?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Philip Arst. Regarding this fiscal analysis, I think that it's commendable, that it's provided as part of the general plan update. My concern is that there is virtually no backing, no background, to show how those numbers were reached. And I formally ask for a copy of the study. Can we get that?
Actually, the memorandum report from the consultant that's attached to the staff report is all that, that he has prepared in writing for us this time. There's extensive documentation of the fiscal impact model that was provided actually years ago to the General Plan Update Committee, the General Plan Advisory Committee, the Planning Commission, and the city council, and I'll be happy to share that with Mr. Arst. But it's the same model.
I have those studies, and as Mr. Rosansky will remember, I, I questioned the study, the general plan update, and I never got a satisfactory answer. The study was seriously flawed, and I'm just concerned that this study is seriously flawed. And we can, we won't go into the details. But this, not having this information, this brings up a point covered previously. What we heard tonight was misrepresentation of the true traffic situation on the general plan update. Well, Mrs. Wood said that, yes, there are 18 intersections, and they'll all be fixed and go down to two. We don't have the money to fix the six unsatisfactory intersections that we have in the city now. In an article in the Pilot last week, it was stated that the developers will only pay part of the cost of enlarging all these intersections. We taxpayers will be on the hook to provide more street access for the Irvine Company and other big developers, and I just don't think that's fair, and I don't think it's been properly reported and represented. That's the characteristic of this whole election campaign that I've seen. Just tell part of the facts, tell the part that supports your position, and through heavy investments of campaign money, try and convince the public that those half-truths are, are the gospel. So I don't expect any, anything else from, from you on that, but I did want to state the position that this intersection fixing, it brings up the next point. Well, we heard about 38 residents writing a general plan update, which is very heavily changed by you gentlemen and lady. Let me point out that that's 38 residents, 1,000 residents in the poll said that they did not want all this traffic. 1,000 residents said that on a two-to-one basis that they didn't want the streets of the city enlarged the way you're proposing. You're going the exact opposite of what the people in this city want and what officially they, they were polled for by an outside consultant. So I still take exception to the comment about residents. Greenlight had 8,000 people sign its initiative. We won with 63% of the vote in year 2000, and that, we're trying to follow the will of, of the public, of the residents. Thank you.
I find your comments rather interesting. I find your comments rather interesting. You are considering what is being said as, as half-truths, and I would like to turn it around, because I don't believe that a lot of the information and facts that you and your organization have put forth fully address all the truth either, so... all the truth either. So I guess that we're going to have to agree to disagree on this particular item. As far as the city's ability to fund street improvements, I think we've done an exceptional job over the last thirty years of being able to fund all of the necessary traffic improvements within the community, utilizing funds from all sources. When you talk about taxes, yes, we use gas tax funds for our roadways. Yes, we use Measure M funds for our roadways. We have probably spent in excess of $300 million on road improvements in the last thirty years. We have estimates of what can be done. Our general plan has the roadmap of how, as the various different things are implemented within the general plan, it has the roadmap of how that system will be completed. And if we adopt Measure V, if we adopt the general plan, I think that we will be able to fund it. So I guess I disagree with some of the colleagues.
Well, that's normal, people disagree. Your own people have said and quoted in the pilot last week that developers will only pay for part of the intersection improvements. And the second point is that, said before, if you can't improve the six unsatisfactory intersections now, how can you expect us to believe you when you say, well, we're going to improve sixteen sometime in the future with money we don't have? Thank you, sir.
A different thing, too.
Don, we said we had a divided four-lane primary road down Corona in Coast Highway.
Dick, let's not get into that section.
A hundred and four feet wide, it says in the book. I'd like to know where the hundred and four feet are.
There's a hundred feet there.
No, there's seventy-six. That's quite a bit of difference.
But the right-of-way width is a hundred feet wide.
No, the right-of-way isn't. It's seventy-six feet.
Point of order.
And if you would like, I'll go through it with a tape measure, and we'll go from door to door, and we'll measure it. It'll turn out a hundred feet.
I'd be happy to do that. I have both evidence from old-time newspapers and your own book.
Maybe we can have a study session on Pacific Coast Highway, measure the street. Hi, my name is Dolores Otting. Mr. Mayor, could I ask a question of Sharon in regards to the fiscal impact report? This is the same fiscal impact report that went to GPAC and then went to GPAC, right? The same one years ago?
Not this report, but the model that was used.
The model that was used, right, okay. And that was the model, and I know that Councilmember Ridgeway will remember, because he was the mayor at that time, but that was the same model that had those weird numbers with Newport Coast. And I asked, because the numbers were not accurate, and I don't ever remember, because I asked again, you know how I am, when they were going to fix those numbers. So I have to say that, I have to say that I'm sure they've been corrected, but I don't really believe that. And so, in those days, which was in 2001 and 2002 and 2003, that model had a lot of problems. And I was told that they would come back with new numbers, but then, I never saw any new numbers on Newport Coast, and I just gave up. So anyway, thank you very much.
Ms. Wood will review that.
Dolores, the only comment I can make, yeah, actually, it's vague, yeah, exactly. But I just want to say, we were very low on the Newport Coast numbers, so I want to say we're, they have, they more than adequately pull their share.
Thank you. This is a receive and file item. City Clerk?
Motion for reconsideration. A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Does any council member wish to reconsider any items? Seeing none, can I have the council's attention, please? I'd like to close this evening's meeting in memory of two former city employees, which have passed away in the last two weeks. One is, the first one is Maxine Broback. She did not have a very high-profile position within the city. However, she worked for us for well over twenty years, and she started in the water department and then was in the payroll in the administrative services department. Maxine was always a very dedicated employee. She had many hobbies at Beanbag, Beanie Bags, I believe, and other things that she decorated her office and many other desks around the city hall with. Her license plate was Haymax. She was, she enjoyed life, she enjoyed her retirement, and I would offer my condolences to her and her family. We also had another passing of retired police officer. His name was Jim Jacobs. He was a captain. He was the acting police chief in a very, very tough timeframe between police chiefs prior to Chief McDonald coming on board. He retired after over twenty-nine years of service with the city and moved to Missouri. He had cancer, which he conquered the first time, but the second time got him. And both of these individuals I knew very well and will miss. Thank you.